We will go back on the agenda with item 7B. This is Rick Bone has asked to be on the agenda to discuss the city forum. Rick?
Hour and 20 minutes on that one, so I'll try to be more brief. But I do have a statement that I'd like to make here. I'm asking for a city forum to be developed. I love to see all the people here tonight. That's how it should be. So hopefully, that is my request at the end of this. Mr. Mayor, city council members, first I'd like to say that I think this is a great city, and many great things take place every day. I believe in all city employees, fire, police, well, fire and police are all hardworking, dedicated people, and our city leadership has the citizens' best interests at heart. That doesn't mean we will always agree. This is the great thing about democracy, certainly saw that in place tonight, so sometimes you just get to agree or disagree. That being said, I'd like to provide a little background. I started attending these meetings routinely about a year and a half ago when the Marshall Canyon Golf Course, Sierra Laverne Country Club, land swap, land swap was being considered by LA County. A lot of people came to these meetings and demanded action from the city to stop that deal, and it worked. Many council members claimed to have no knowledge of the issue, as Louis Holmes had never filed some sort of official document with our city. After a fairly contentious meeting, the city agreed to send a letter to the county saying, quote, "No deal." Unfortunately, shortly after that meeting, a previous council member called the people that were here and against it a linchmar in the local paper. She was shameless. That should not happen. We are the citizens. A month or so later, the city sent a flyer to the homeowners floating a quarter cent potential tax increase. That's when I started to look into how the city spent our money versus just asking to take more of it. The flyer said we needed the tax increase to properly fund our city services like police and fire. It also indicated the city had a structural deficit of around a million dollars. Many people complained, and after new county financial measures were voted on in the previous, excuse me, in the election, the previous council decided to shelve that tax issue for possible future consideration. The deficit issue remained. Then came our city election. For the first time in history that I'm aware of, I've lived here for 35 years, we had someone run against the city mayor. Most surprising to me, anyway, was that it seemed to get very nasty, especially for a small town like Laverne. By the way, these are facts, not political statements, I'm not going to use any names. First of all, our mayor and a current councilperson claimed the city had no structural deficit. This was repeated many, many times. It was absolutely not true. Just review interviews given by our own city manager and our ex-business director to local newspapers. Only one mayoral candidate referred to the $46.4 million unfunded pension liability. That was the first time I ever heard a number, especially a number that big. In fact, our mayor said at that time, at the Hillcrest Forum, there was no big deal, and it should be looked at like a home mortgage, something that's always there. Second, the discourse between our firefighters and their issue with funding finally came to the public, at least as far as I'm concerned. Thanks to the internet, you can review the candidate forum last year, where a city councilman, city councilperson stated that the fire department was fully funded in our budget. She was wrong. The challenger for mayor said he fully supported all city personnel, but if we can't afford all the current services, we need to review options. He was the only person to acknowledge the potential problem. Shortly after the election, it appears that the issue between the rank and file firefighters and the fire chief got very nasty. I'm sure you'll hear about that later. Since the election, there've been many discussions on numerous subjects in, not necessarily this chamber, but the chamber. There's also been many times that city councilmembers have derided the citizens for their opinions. Citizens were told that they could move if they didn't like the decisions. On more than one occasion, one councilperson has indicated that most citizens were not smart enough to understand the nuances of their decisions. In fact, on October 16th, after I challenged his city sales tax numbers regarding his misguided loan to Chaser's Restaurant, of which he is related through marriage, he told me that he would be glad to, quote, "attempt to tutor me in basic math." People that know me would laugh at that idea. Shortly after that discussion the same day, a city employee, a director of a major department, verbally and physically tried to intimidate an observer, say assault, me, right here in the chamber. I reported this incident to the mayor and city manager and warned of legal action if it ever happened again. I have no idea if he was ever disciplined, I certainly know he never apologized. As issues come up, I look for facts. Many times, there's many roadblocks, where I used to be able to ask for information, I'm now asked to submit a proper public information paperwork. I'm okay with following the rules, but even when I do, I don't think it fits in pieces versus the whole story, and I have a flyer to prove it, if anybody's interested. Since I've become, excuse me, since I've become to address the facts, I've been approached by numerous city employees with interesting comments. One told me that, after one of the meetings, that the city management told them that I wanted to take away all their benefits. Not anywhere close to the truth. In fact, I have questioned the city's ability to afford a high level of benefits, but that's a whole nother subject. Now we enter the social media sites. Nextdoor in particular. Recently, there was a post titled "Shady City Council." Just the fact that anyone would post a thread with that title should be of huge concern to the city itself. Is this the legacy you want? Another, under another heading of "City Address and Pension Issue," I posted facts, as I know them, regarding the firefighter issue and the bad Chaser's Restaurant loan. I received a response back that claimed I was, quote, "very angry, bitter, and always looking for evil within the city." So much for discourse. Nothing could be further from the truth. I love this city. I've lived here for 35 years, I've raised two kids here, they both went to Vini High, I bought three houses, and plan to live here forever. I want this city to prosper and remain a great place to live. Unfortunately, a back and forth discussion can apparently no longer take place without it turning into a personal attack. Finally, it was announced at the last meeting that the city plans to issue a $50 million bond just to cover existing pension obligations. A bond like this, as far as I understand, is set to be like a 30-year home loan. $3 million a year for 30 years. $90 million total obligation to the citizens of Laverne. $2,903 per man, woman, and child that live in this city. It will be, but the most interesting part, and I've already seen it on the city's website, it's going to be presented as a cost savings to the city. It's going to be presented as a $35 million cost savings. Pardon me, but only a public entity could make such an outrageous claim. Not one dime for street repairs. Think Wheeler South of Foothill for the last couple of years. If you ever drive it, you better have your teeth checked before you fill those. Not one dime to have a fully functioning and funded, properly funded fire and police department. Not one dime for banners to honor our citizens serving in the military. Not even a dime for a proper sewer line to eliminate the gross smell on Cattlewood. Not one penny to improve the city, but $50 million or $90 million in payments for pensions for current and future retirees, that is a shameful act. This brings me to my request for a city public forum. I hear this council routinely discusses transparency. But the state of the city is getting offsite at noon on a weekday with no official record of the mayor's comments. Why not give that as part of a city council meeting or a public city forum? There's another offsite meeting coming up, apparently on March 5th, at, of all places, Chaser's Restaurant, who just received a loan. Coincidence? I tend not to believe in those. Why offsite versus part of the session or as part of a public forum? During the last two councilmember meetings, I had asked the mayor to start a public forum, similar to the election candidate forum. In fact, very similar like tonight's meeting. The purpose being to allow citizens to ask questions of, regarding budget, fire, police issues, public safety, crime levels, which seem to be growing up, but no one seems to admit it, department heads, city benefits, future city plans for revenue increases, et cetera, et cetera. Let the citizens ask anything and everything they are entitled, they are interested in with straightforward answers from city leaders. We never get those. Otherwise, we're all left to speculation and innuendo, and these days, most of that comes from social media. The mayor failed to respond to my request, that's why I asked for this subject to be an agenda item per the rules. If you want to be seen as transparent, become transparent. I would ask for a motion and a second and a vote to establish at least an annual, if not semi-annual, public city forum for the purpose of citizen involvement, and I would hope that would be prior to our next 2018, 2019 budget, so people can fully understand what the issues, the monetary issues are regarding this city. Personally, I don't expect of a motion and probably not a second, as my recent experiences have reflected a desire by the city to be secretive versus open and transparent. Please prove me wrong and vote for citizen involvement. Respectfully, Richard Bone.
Okay, we are going to move on to 7C. Does anybody have, Rick, do you want to come back up here?
Sure.
Sorry.
I guess I wasn't clear. I would like to see more than that made by someone.
No, I apologize. I apologize. First of all, you made some statements about Chaser's Restaurant as far as holding the Downtown Business Improvement District Annual Meeting.
Okay.
I have been attending those for 25 years. I don't think Chaser's has been there for 25 years. The restaurants...
You just gave an $80,000 loan.
No, just a minute, we're not talking about the loan, we're talking about, which you talked about, the annual meeting, which is what you mentioned, that it happened by coincidence. Every restaurant downtown has held those meetings over the years. Whether they got anything or not, it just, it just kind of rotates around. We've had them at Roberta's, we've had them at Heroes, we've had them at T. Phillips, we've had them at Spooner's, we've had them at Papa's Artisanal. I mean, I've been to all of them, I've spoken to many of them, and they're good meetings to attend because it brings business, it brings out the business that is happening downtown and the involvement of the people downtown to do this. These are good things, Rick, not bad things. And the fact that it's at Chaser's, it just happens to be at Chaser's. He sponsored it last year, I think it might have been the first year, he asked all the candidates to come so that all the downtown business owners could hear from the candidates. These are positive things. It wasn't meant to be a bad thing. The State of the City is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and the Rotary. We didn't pick the time.
You can't give it to the citizens?
If, wait a minute, wait a minute, if it wants to, if they want to do it at night, we'll be there at night, Rick. If you want to talk to the chamber, and you want to talk to the Rotary and say, "Please, let's do it tonight," they would probably do it at night.
And Don, you also take the State of the City address to every mobile home park in the city.
That's great. How many people live in a mobile home, how about the rest of us? They don't live in a mobile home.
You're invited to those, though. You can come to the State of the City address.
If you look hard enough, I'm sure you can find where you can invite. But Don, let me address, let me address the Chaser's issue. It looks bad. I'm sorry. It just looks bad. It might be legal, but it's, it looks, the optics are awful. You live, you have their office across the street from the new building. You did not recuse yourself. I've seen you recuse yourself from every issue in downtown Laverne, other than that.
Okay. Every time there is an issue, Rick, I ask our city attorney about a conflict of interest. I am not going to vote on anything that our city attorney tells me that I cannot vote on, believe me. We saw an example tonight where Robert Carter got up and had to leave the room because of a conflict of interest. And I will tell you that every single time there is anything close, and I've been told many times, Don, you don't have an issue, but I'm the one that's asking if I have an issue. And I would like to ask our city attorney to please explain this.
The rest of the city forum is here.
Okay, just, I think this is important.
There is no conflict of interest with reference to the Chaser's Restaurant loan on the part of the mayor or a councilman of the day. Carefully looked at these issues before he came to the council for a vote. When it was raised, after the loan was actually approved by the council, I looked at it again to satisfy myself, I had my partner look at it. Rick, I mean, you said it may be legal, but it looks bad. Well, okay, I thank you for acknowledging that it is legal.
In your opinion?
Well, my opinion in pursuant to state law. I assure everyone in this room, many of you know me, I've been the attorney for this city for 28 years. I take the job very seriously. I'm not going to put any member of this council in jeopardy or the city by allowing something that is not appropriate. And their participation was entirely appropriate and in accordance with state law.
Okay. And I appreciate that, as I said, it might be legal, but it smells like Cattlewood.
We've addressed that, we've gone back and forth, but let's get back to your proposal.
I'd like to address one thing you just said. I like the fact that you just made your statement that you had numerous correspondence going back and forth. I made a city request...
I didn't say any, I didn't use the word correspondence. I'm not sure what you heard.
You said you had many discussions regarding...
Didn't say that either.
What did you say?
I said I looked at, I looked at the issue, and then I had my partner look at the issue.
And issued a, some sort of guidance.
No.
You just said you issued guidance and they were okay.
Yeah.
Which one is it?
Which one is it?
I might think it is.
I know you're not thinking it, because this is what I did. I made a written request, as per the rules, and I got basically nothing back. In fact, I got one note from you that said, "Oh, by the way, we found one piece of information that you want to see that we didn't give you originally." I got four emails. Somebody else made the same request, it got many more than I did. So where's the transparency in that? And I'm glad you just said it, you had a review.
Please address this request for a public forum.
Okay, we're going to get, we're going to get to that, Julie.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'd like to talk about the public forum.
Thank you.
That's my answer.
Okay.
You know, when I, as far as being on council, I think it's so important for our residents' input, as you all know, as of tonight. It's really ironic, you get off the freeway, Arrow Highway in San Dimas, and you drive there, and there's a banner from the McDonald's over to the gas station that says, "Please join our commissions, we have openings, please, we want resident input." I am not opposed whatsoever, I think commissions are great, I think we've kind of fallen away from those, and I think that we should, I think honestly, we should probably do this because the more people that know what's going on in the city, the more informed people that know that what's going on in the city can see what's going on up here, and they have input. I am not opposed whatsoever, I think it's a very good suggestion. I don't know about the forum, I think more like commissions that would be either public safety, public works, parks, recreation, I know we used to have those, we have a few still, we have planning commissions that are appointed, but still not by a large body. And I, I'm not opposed to it. I think getting more people involved, it seems like people really want to have a voice in this, and I think it's a good time to put some of these together, have staff look at it and see what we need to do to form these, and get a list going, and get it out to the residents. We have Facebook pages, we have everything now, so there's no reason why. At least, I would make a motion that we would start putting together commissions and have us do the study on it, see what we have to do to get our residents involved. I don't know what...
Well, that's really not on the agenda as an item, I mean, although we heard the speech, but the end result of the speech was to request a public forum. So that's the only item on which the council...
So was anybody willing to do that?
Well, so let me weigh in. I don't think you need council to make a motion to have a public forum. What you need to have a public forum is, you tell us where it's going to be, when, who's hosting it, and you make sure you have a parliamentary in there so that we don't violate any Brown Act, and you set it up and we go.
So it's up to us.
Sure, that's, that's what the, that's what...
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that.
That's what Rotary does, that's what others do, the Chamber of Commerce puts it together. They don't sit there and ask us, "Oh..."
We're a bunch of citizens, just like the Cattlewood people. They don't have a lawyer, they don't have anybody representing them directly. So why doesn't the city council just simply put together this and maybe evolve into something else, but in the meantime, let the citizens ask you questions? Because to me, again, it just seems like you don't want to hear anything. You're not interested. Go away, there's nothing here.
Rick, that's, that has never been the case...
Seems like it.
In the, well, in the 12 years that I've been, I have talked to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of our residents over many issues over many years. But I'll tell you what I will recommend. I think involvement is good. Always have. If you want to have public forums right here in this room, I will support them. But you're going to have to come up with some topics that you and other people are interested in. We have public forums on many items that come through, we have had many on the gold light. We have had, we are in the process of having many for the new general plan. These are public, this information is out there in social media. Please come, please give us your input, please talk to us. So this is out there. If you want to have a topic on something other than what are the things that are being discussed now, I have no problem supporting it. We've had many, many, many sessions in this room where we've invited the public, and we have been here and we've talked to them. This is not new.
Sure feels new to me.
I don't know where you've been, Rick, because we've been doing, doing this for years.
Okay, but we have to remember, to have a public forum, it has to be an agendized meeting, because we can't have any more than two per the Brown Act at any event. So it would have to be agendized to have a meeting.
Let's send two at a time.
Can I suggest something else that might be a little bit easier and maybe offer more opportunities? Some cities have gone to like a, either a quarterly or a monthly, Saturday morning this way, and maybe it's one or two councilmembers that have a spot that they'll be for a one or two-hour period, and they can answer a variety of questions that whoever happens to be there might be kind of addressing some of the issue that you have. And it's just a different one or two councilmembers, but maximum of two, of course, so we're not violating the Brown Act. Doesn't have to be on a Saturday on a weekend, it could be a day during the week, but maybe to provide that flexibility and latitude, it's not something that is so formal and structured, and maybe give people a little bit of freedom to ask questions.
You know, I like that idea, because then we could move it around different days, different times, and have two at a time, and we could have just an open discussion.
If you want to host one at your house, we'll be there. Or someplace else.
I'll have to buy a bigger house.
Joanne...
We have to have a Cattlewood.
Joanne would let us come here.
Okay, so how about we, we don't really need the motion, we could just direct, well, how about for the first one, okay, I'll make the motion. Let's, I'll make the motion that we move forward on organizing a public forum, and but we would like to know topics that you would like to discuss, you know, so we can...
Well, I think we can leave it a little bit more, if we're going to do it in the format of that informal, it could just be a dialogue and an interaction.
Okay.
We'll try and work out a location.
I will vote, I will second that motion.
Okay.
All those in favor, please, Rick. Does anybody else have, I know Julie, you stood up, is this, is this okay? Do you want to add to it?
Well, I thought you were scurrying the issue.
Now, what do you start? Thank you.
I thought you were scurrying the issue with this Chase business, and it wasn't addressing exactly what he asked for, and that was for a public forum. And then you asked him to sit down, or he sat down, I don't know what the, excuse me.
Julie, that was my fault, I'm sorry.
All right, and then you acted like you weren't going to do anything, and that's why the uproar in the back.
It's appropriate.
And it looked exactly that, I think you wanted to portray it, until there was the uproar in the back.
No, that's not, I made a mistake, and I apologize.
As part of the case issue, the cases issue, I think that went on way too long. I don't think that's the main concern here, although I'm sure some people are concerned about it. I came to speak about something else, we're very, it's an agenda item, so I'll come up then.
Anybody else that would like to... Anybody else that would like to weigh in on that? Okay, we'll bring it back here. We have a motion and a second.
So I've met somebody before. I'm a resident here in a business owner. You know, I had a really different opinion coming in here on how this is going to handle. I think, what's it known saying? Tremendous job, because I had a lot of the same backup that you were talking about. I don't think this is, you know...
Could you address?
I'm sorry. I don't think what he was addressing was so much...
Need to address the council, sir.
...is a business here. Hold on. I think what he's addressing here is the accountability that you guys have. You know, I have issues with a lot of things that go on here. He appointed, he addressed a lot of the issues here. This isn't at Chase's, you know, they're a business here, okay? What I think residents are upset on is that he brought up the financial aspect of the city. And I look at things that are going on, and this isn't an accountability of the residents' to deal with. This isn't accountability for you guys to deal with, right? We shouldn't have to tell you what to do, right? I mean, you guys all work in business, right? And I mean, this isn't how you run a business. It just isn't, right? But I don't want to chastise Chase's, and I don't want to tell you. We should be chastising you guys. This is what we're doing. I mean, I was so mad. I came here a year ago, but I'm not going to address those issues because it's not the right time. This gentleman addressed every issue the citizens have, right? So don't ask me what to do. I'm not a city council member. He's not a city council member. Come up with an agenda for us. How you going to address it? $50 million in debt. Really? I read that and I was appalled by it, right? Because you're going to charge me fees to do a fire inspection, right? And you're telling me everything's okay. And then this gentleman up here has concerns for the citizens. Now, what chance are you spending this? Right? But no one else is going to come up here, don't ask me what to do. Come and deliver something, give deliverables. I pay taxes, I pay taxes. Business profits, everything. 30 seconds, thank you. I don't need that. But don't ask me what to do. You're providing a service. So someone else can come up here and give you a break. But I don't want this gentleman, this kind of sucks.
Is anybody else that would like to speak on this issue? Yes.
Terrence. All right. The issue right now...
Is public forums.
Is the public forum. And there's a motion on the floor. If anyone really wants to address that before the council votes, that would be appropriate. Other things will follow.
Yes.
My name is John Phillips, in the presence of the board. Who would we contact here on this forum?
Contact me. Absolutely.
Or City Hall, once.
If you, you know, one of the things that we would, that I foresee on this, is we can provide information about topics, but if there's a topic that you want information on, let us know and we'll provide it.
Well, I totally agree with that. I mean, it's us together.
Yes.
That's what I did. I mean, it's not you, it's not yourself. It's supposed to be us together.
Absolutely.
It's got a chart there that I downloaded from your guy's website. It shows the homeowners up here, then the city councils up here. Well, it ain't, if the future guys did this before, it ended up that way, that's this way. And so I'm really glad that you guys are coming around and finally listening to some of the things that we've presented, but it's really been worth it.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Okay, anybody that you have? Okay. Okay, just call me. You know how to get hold of me. If there's anything that you, and if you want, you know, call the City Hall, get on an email if you want specifics, we'll put it out on social media, but if you want to be, if there's a different way that you want to be contacted, please let us know. Anybody else that would like to address this issue? Okay, we have a first, a motion, a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Terrence, thank you, Rick. Okay, we will move to item C.